Good evening. I'd like to call our school committee meeting to order. It is Thursday, June 15th. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda is public participation. Would anyone like to address the committee? Seeing no one in the audience, we will go to good news. Anyone like to share some good news? Joyce?
So obviously, so many celebrations in the last couple of weeks. It wasn't lost on me that on a Friday night, we were celebrating the seniors in the class of 2023, and the following week, we were welcoming at a celebration at the elementary school, the class of 2036. Just saying that number, yeah. Yeah, crazy. And of course, last night was a night school graduation. I'm so glad Jane Von Dules is here to tell us more about that because that is definitely a favorite of mine. And again, we've already celebrated the retirements of the staff who are retiring, but I just want to say another thank you to them for their dedication, for spending their career here in Wareham to educate our children. Thank you.
Anybody else? We'd just like to mention that there is a fundraiser that is going to help the Community Youth Empowerment Group in Wareham this Saturday, which is a bunch of alumni basketball games with the female games starting at 3:30. The men will be playing at 5:00, the real old timers, and then at 6:30, it's the 2010 state championship team against the current 2023 state championship team. And again, all this money goes to a good cause for community and youth empowerment, and that's Jawan Gamble, who leads that, who is also an alumnus of Wareham High School.
Matt's laughing over here. Are you talking about yourself when you say that? Are you playing in this game?
Unfortunately, I'm unable to play. I am coaching the 2010 team again, though. Jeff?
Speaking of alumni, on, gosh, what night was it? Monday? Monday night? Yes, Monday night? Yes. Monday night, the alumni, i.e. the six seniors who were on the championship tennis team last year, eked out, there were six of them, a win over this year's six seniors. It was a fun night for not only the players, but the parents who came, especially the parent who had a senior on the alumni and a senior on the graduates for this year. So it was sister against sister on the doubles team. But if you'll allow me to crow a little bit more, the girls' tennis team finished 15 and 7, made it to the second round of playoffs, and, this is really important, they had a 94.4 average GPA.
Excellent. Very good, obviously. All right, we'll move on. Actually, it's not really under good news. I'll call it bittersweet news. The school committee had planned to recognize Mr. Bob White this evening. Bob is usually behind the camera and controls making sure that the public has access to our meetings on WCTV. Bob retired on May 31st. He cannot be here in person tonight, but he assured me he would be watching, so that's why I'd like to move this recognition up to the beginning of the meeting, so he does not have to watch yet another town department meeting all the way through. Bob first volunteered at WCTV in 2009, where he hosted several shows, including a series about veterans. He became an official employee of the cable station in 2013. In 2017, he became the government liaison, which means he had to attend every Wareham department meeting, ensuring the public access to the goings-on of the Selectmen, Finance Committee, Sewer Commission, Planning Board, and School Committee, to name a few, saving the best for last. I first met Bob four years ago, when I began my tenure in the school committee, and quickly learned that he was professional, supportive, and kind, really a true gentleman. We really wish him well. He's going to be missed, and we want him to know that he's in our thoughts. We have a couple of small items as a token of our appreciation for Bob, which we will get to him, and I just want to say publicly, thank you, Bob. Okay, next up, we have the PASS report with Ms. Von Dules.
What about the mincemeat?
Hi. Good evening. So yes, last night, we had our 2023 graduates from the Wareham Cooperative Alternative PASS Night School Program. We had 14 graduates, eight of which had finished in January, and six that finished up in June. So all 14 completed their requirements to graduate. The age range this year for our students was from 16 years to 19 and a half years old. This year, new to our program, we had the First Generation Investors, which is a nonprofit organization that teaches underserved high school students the power of investing and provides the students with real money to invest. So they did an eight-week series with our students in the building at the high school, but it was virtual with other college students who tutored them weekly. Those students were from across the country, from BU, Harvard, Chapel Hill. And so just to give you an overview, they did one week. It was personal finance, and it was what is a stock? Then they learned what is a bond, and what does it mean to diversify? Then they had a week of mutual funds, a week of compound interest, and then personal finance. And then the week eight, they had to do a capstone project where they had to present and pitch a $100 portfolio, drawing from a list of pre-selected mutual funds, index funds, and EFTs. The interesting thing with this partnership, and we are going to continue this coming this fall, is the students actually get a real $100 to create their portfolio. And upon graduation, they're given that portfolio, or once they turn 18 years of age. So this fall, we're going to keep that program, along with our continued partnership with the Greater New Bedford workforce. So they came on board again this year, and they did several seminars. They conducted a series of seminars designed to build knowledge of personal wealth management, business, and practical job-related skills. Some of the topics included career identity, pathway planning, budgeting, understanding checking versus savings accounts, resume writing, and interview techniques. They also did, they surveyed all our students in trust survey, because the one thing that's great about the New Bedford workforce is they will place our students, or any of the Wareham High School students, in jobs, and they pay. The company that hires them doesn't have to pay them the wage the New Bedford workforce does, because they have grants for that. And they also are a beneficiary, because with last night's graduation, the goody bags that we gave the students and the flowers, and they are reimbursing us. They wanted to pay for all of that for our graduates. So that's what's going on with the night school program.
Any questions? Brett?
I remember when we talked about this program before. I just think it's an excellent idea. Is there any chance or possibility for us to expand it so that regular Wareham High School students could sign up for it in some way? I mean, maybe take it as an elective or something, but this seems to me like a class that people say all the time, you know, they should teach kids about finance, and it seems like a great idea. Is there any way we could expand it to our, I don't want to say regular, but you know, the average high school student?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure I can have a conversation with Brett. I'm going to be having a conversation with the superintendent and Kristin at the end of the month with some ideas that we have to move forward next year with the PASS program, as well as bringing some ideas on board with Scott Palladino, but...
Because I imagine it would also go well with the DECA program.
Right. And with the night school program in particular, I, my vision is I want every graduate of the night school program make it mandatory that they take this eight-week program with the eight weeks that...
Absolutely.
...the Mass Higher Board does, so that our kids come out with not only some career options, college, and that kind of thing. But no, it's a good idea. I can certainly have conversations with Brett, who is the CEO of First Generation Investors.
And the other thing, with the portfolios that they built, I'm assuming that they can grow, you know, as the stock market goes?
Oh, sure, they can, yeah.
Do you know if anyone had any, like, really big gain? You know, took their $100 and doubled it or tripled it or anything?
It's still being held, because they were under 18.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
So when we come back in the fall, because they're still with us, they weren't graduates. So when they come back in the fall and they do this, they're going to be able to grow their portfolio even more.
If you can keep track, I mean, it'd be great to hear if they, you know, if there's someone that's really good at it, I might get some stock tips from them, so.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Joyce?
I was just going to say, I know you've talked about it before, but for anyone who doesn't know that this, does this program, this night school program, doesn't exist everywhere?
No.
In every district. So I just want to recognize you, you know, for having it here in Wareham. We're very fortunate to have this program, and other students from other towns come to this program.
Right.
So we don't take it for granted.
No.
Thank you.
What's the enrollment going to be for next year? Do you anticipate?
Well, we have approximately 24 returning.
Okay.
And then we'll have our brochures go out mid-August is when we start registration, and then we send them to all of the surrounding schools, all the guidance counselors. But we start getting calls now with, you know, and not only do we get students that are full-time, we'll get Wareham High School students that maybe need to take Algebra II because they needed to graduate. So they come that evening for that course, and they pay for that. So that helps as well.
Thank you. Jeff?
First of all, I want to apologize for not being there last night.
That's okay.
I had a commitment that I couldn't break, but actually, I would have preferred to have been there. Do you, how much do you, and by the way, I share Brett's enthusiasm for that program. I think it's wonderful. Do you track your graduates for a period of time after they leave you?
We try to. We track them.
Tough, isn't it?
It is. We track them. Before they graduate, we find out what their plans are, particularly these 14 graduates. Several are going on to Bristol Community College.
They are.
Yep. Some are already in the workforce full-time. The girl that spoke last night, she works full-time at Shaw's, and her hopes is maybe at some point to, to go to cosmetology. The gentleman that did the Pledge of Allegiance, Sebastian, he worked full-time with a carpenter while going to night school. So that's the field he is interested in. And then we try to periodically, they come back. We had a graduate from two years ago, came back this afternoon to visit with her nine-month-old baby, so, yeah. But we try to, try to keep on top and see what's happening with them.
Thank you.
April?
Sorry. I know that you mentioned that, you know, some of the graduates that are, that are going into like more, I would say probably like workforce or vocational, do you guys have offerings where you bring in like people from, say, like a post-grad, like cosmetology school, or things like that, to, to talk to the kids about options? Is that something that exists already?
Yeah, that's what the New Bedford workforce does.
Okay.
So when they did the interest survey, I have one student in particular who graduated last night, that she's been, she's going to be working directly with Devin, who is our connection at the New Bedford Workforce Board, and she wants to become a Vet Tech. So they will, they're going to help her.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that's what they do, yep.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm just going to stay put.
Okay. Dr. Schwamm is up next. Are you going to do summer programming?
Yep.
No, I'm going to move. You want to sit here so that you can control?
I want all the controls. Because it's all an illusion, anyway. We pretend.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. What I'd like to do before we start to talk about our summer programming is to first articulate our vision, mission, and core beliefs, because it's really what drives everything and every decision that we make. There is no doubt that we believe it is our collective responsibility to help students learn. As school leaders, we need to demonstrate respect and persevere as we construct positive relationships. That energy is then transferred to our students and has the potential to transform culture. Our schools need to provide safe learning environments dedicated to compassionate, honest communication. We need to consider what it means to provide encouraging, inclusive learning opportunities that foster and challenge all to be the best versions of themselves. Want to go first?
Sure. Okay, so summer programming. So the Office of Beyond School Time is a grant-funded central office that oversees a lot. As we say, it's, I always say beyond school time, but it's like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, where a little bit of everything. So we have, this summer, we have the CARE, SALE. So the CARE and SALE are 21st Century Grants through DESI. They're a federal grant. We've been fortunate, I've been doing this for over 20 years, and we've had the 21st Century Grants, and we're just fortunate that we are demonstration site in the state. So CARE is for K to 7. And then when we got the 21st Century Grant for the high school several years back, we came up with the name SALE. We just thought it was a little more grown-up than CARE. So, and then we, because of COVID, we secured some after-school and out-of-school time grants. They're called ASOS-T. And because of COVID, they allowed us to concentrate on an accelerated summer academy for middle school and for high school. So those students, the intention is that then the mornings, they would get a more concentrated program strictly, like, say, if a student really was at risk in mathematics or English, that morning, that would be their focus. And then the intent is, is that they would then roll over into either the CARE program if they're a middle school student, or the SALE if they're at the high school. So at the elementary school this summer, starting July 10th, we will have the BOOST program, which is a literacy-based program for our students that are incoming kindergarten first, second, and third grade. Then we have the CARE, which is for K through 7, and that is a hands-on, project-based curriculum. And then we have the Accelerated Summer Academy. And then, as I said, at the high school, we've got the SALE. The total staff working this summer is, we have 10 college interns, most of which are returning to us from last year. We have a few new ones, but particularly our college interns who have worked our BOOST program for the last couple of summers are coming back, because they love the program. We have 10 high school interns. I think I talked about that last summer, that we were, we started it actually Wareham. We actually did a high school internship program a couple of years ago, and DESI liked that, so the 21st Century put out a new grant, and we secured it. So we have 10 high school interns with a, I have a coordinator that's going to work with them, and they are actually, just think of it as student teaching. They are going to, for six weeks, work with a teacher with the grade level that they are comfortable with, and they will be a student teacher, and at the end, they will be teaching lessons and get paid. So they have a nice summer job. And it was worked out with Scott, because the interns do 144 hours in six weeks. They have to do a lot of reflection, a lot of journal writing, and they have to write a final essay, and so they get five elective credits for their high school transcript. Then we also have 87 staff. The 87 staff are comprised of teachers, paras, secretaries, nurse, coordinators. The total number of students right now at the elementary school with all of the programs, and we still, I'm still getting a lot of phone calls. Unfortunately, I wish we had an endless bucket of money, but we don't. So currently, we have 264 students that are going to be attending the elementary school, and right now, we have 110 that will be at the high school. They're still registering, because they wait until the very last day of school and report cards, because the nice thing about SALE is a lot of the students can take the six-week program and use it for credit recovery. If they had too many absences, then by doing the SALE program, they then can earn back some credit. And then we'll continue with many of our off-site field experiences that the staff plan, based on the program that they are teaching. Plus, we're going to continue our five weeks of programming with the Buzzards Bay Coalition, where grades four through seven will go there weekly. So say, Group A will go week one, Group B goes week two, and they do kayaking and exploration and sailing. And then we'll continue our five weeks of programming with the YMCA, where our students in grades one through three, same setup, they go for a whole week, where they are fortunate enough to use the outdoor pool, and then they do a team-building exercise with our kids. So that's pretty much what our summer's going to look like. And it is July 10th to August 17th, and our kids go Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 2:30. We'll provide transportation. They get breakfast, lunch, and for many of our students, it's the best part of their summer.
Questions on this part of the program? Anyone? Joyce?
So the new Accelerated Summer Academy, so that is academic?
It's academic-focused, total academic in the morning. And you have to understand, the CARE and SALE program is an academic program, but it's approached differently.
Right.
So it's, it's meshed into an enrichment. So for example, with CARE, I could have kids in the morning be doing camp conventions two mornings a week, and doing our animation two mornings a week, but our focus is on English, so the literacy is threaded throughout all of our programming.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply that...
Oh, no, no, no. It gets confusing for families, though.
This is blatantly...
The Accelerated Academy was created because of COVID, because of the learning loss. I feel that this might probably get phased out. The grants will still be there, but it might take a different focus, where they might want to make it the same way, but with a little more hands-on, project-based.
So this is, this isn't the first year this has existed? It's just the first year that we've done it.
This is the second.
Wareham has done. This is Wareham's second year?
Yes.
Okay. And how are the students identified?
The principals at the high school and the principal at the middle school work closely with their administrative staff, and they look at the data, they look at test scores, they look at the grades, and they target the at-risk students, similar to all of our programming. Our, our, the grants require you to, number one, make it available to the economically disadvantaged, to high-risk students academically, yeah.
So if they're high-risk, but they're not economically disadvantaged, they are eligible to go?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. And of the ones who are identified, how, do you know how many are attending?
As far as I know, everybody's attending.
Oh, all right, good.
Yeah. Now, usually, there's a percentage, particularly maybe with CARE, where they registered back in April, and so the first week, there might be a few students that end up not showing, and it wasn't because they were at risk or something. It's, they, the families have made other plans, something's changed.
Right. It's out of the students' control.
Right. But typically, they all come.
Okay. And my last question about the BOOST program, so is that the same program that we've been doing? Is, are there, have there been changes made to it?
There have been, it's pretty scripted, so it's 100 hours that need to be attended to for five weeks. And we started with kindergarten in 2018, I think.
Yeah.
And then when COVID hit, what we did was we, we started to extend it longer, so that we could reach kids that may not have been able to be at school for a myriad of different reasons, so that we could help catch them up. And so then it extended from, went from K, then it went to 1, then 2, then now it's 2, it's K, 1, 2, 3, so.
So do you have, is there evidence that it's working, that those students are successful?
Yes. The hard part is that we've changed assessment systems, so, and I'll explain that later, but we do assess. So we're able to see that kids are gaining the skills that they need to attend to their next grade level, which is what we would like to have happen, right? We want them prepared. And sometimes it just takes a, just that little bit of extra time to help kids get there, and this provides them that time. I know anecdotally, there have been posts that have stated, my kindergartner can read from parents, and they're bringing books home, and they're reading to us. And so there's a sentiment of, that, that it seems to be successful, and that kids feel more secure in their skills as they move ahead.
I just, in the past, we've gotten, and I can't remember if it's at this meeting, maybe someone else can help me, we've gotten data, test results, you know, not MCAS scores, obviously, but like testing that you do within the schools, that have shown the progression, but we don't have that.
I have a ton of it.
Okay.
Tonight, so.
Oh, to share with us?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Good. Yes.
Then I will stop asking questions.
April?
So I know that it runs from, you know, in, in the summer, 8:30 to 2:30. So do you feel that there, or are there any parents that are unable to send their kids because of busing and not being able to have them go to like an aftercare? Because 2:30 is in the middle of most people's workday. Do you find that that's a struggle for, do parents have concerns? Or is there, because it's not during a regular school time and there's less buses, like, in need throughout the rest of the town, are they able to do, like, you know, where the school used to be able to say, okay, pick them up at my house in the morning, but they get dropped off at a different location for aftercare? Is that able to happen with this program?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We have the bus transportation, and what happens with the registration is when they register, their, the families, we request that they put on the registration where their pickup is going to be and where their drop-off is going to be. So we have a lot of kids that get picked up at home, but then are dropped off at the babysitter's address, or at Best Friends, or wherever they might be going.
Okay. Because I know that during COVID, we weren't doing bus changes for, in general, for kids had to go one way and one way only, and I know that that was really hard for a lot of parents. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Jeff?
You ticked off a lot of numbers in your presentation. I want to make sure I understood. Is it fair to say that the ratio of students to staff is about 4 to 1?
Actually, it can range anywhere from 8 to 10 to 1, because every, every class has a teacher and a para, every class.
I get, I did it kind of simply. You, I think you said there were 89 or 87 employees?
87 staff, 10 high school interns, and 10 college interns.
Okay. So if I, forget about the interns, okay? And you said they're, I'm not saying they're not valuable, I'm just, I didn't want to distort the ratio even more, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay? So if you, if you just take the 87, and, and there were 300 to 400 students?
Yeah, so the way it breaks, the way it breaks down, just so it makes it maybe a little, so the CARE program, we have 17 groups. So of those 17 groups, every group gets a schedule, and they have six classes a week, two in the morning, one class every Monday and Tuesday, one every Wednesday, Thursday. Then they have four classes different every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So they're seeing six different teachers, and those teachers also have a para with them. And the grant requirements are to keep the ratios down, because that's what's going to benefit the students. So none of our class sizes are any larger than usually 12 or 13.
With two staff members in there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's approximately 6 to 1. Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then the others, the way you get down to the 4 to 1 that I did with simple math, is that there are, there are infrastructure, there are people associated with the program that don't actually teach.
Right.
Okay. And all of this is grant-funded?
All.
And it's free to families?
Yeah, free to families, and they get breakfast, lunch, transportation.
Free.
Okay. And I have this, I have the same question that, that Joyce did about, but you're going to tell us how this works, that it does work.
Well, Andrea has the data for BOOST. I mean, I can, I can share another time, like, at the end of the summer, in the fall, I can share. I have to, I'm required to collect data as well. I have, I have 20 years of data. We have to do a survey before the program begins, whether it's in the summer or the school year. Then I have to do a survey at the end. The kids have to do a survey, we survey families. We have a lot of data.
Or, when you say a survey, you're asking kids and parents questions?
Kids have a different survey. Teachers do an academic survey. So if I'm looking at English, we, we do assessments, but it's not like a test, it's...
We have all of my assessments.
Right. They're reflections and that kind of thing, and...
So it's not actual data that would tell us whether the program actually helped?
It's a pre- and post, sure it does.
Well, you say it's, but it's not an assessment. It's a survey.
Well, we call it, the state calls it a SALE. It's a, it's a student academic youth outcome. It's a survey. So we survey, we, they call it a survey, but we have to take data, each student, and there's academic questions, and then their behavioral outcomes that we have to do, whether it's peer relationships, adult relationships.
So give me an example of an academic, the academic piece of this. In other words, it's pre- and post?
So the academic piece, the, the meat of the data is more during the school year, because what happens is, in the after-school program, the day-school teacher has to do these surveys as well. So if I have a fifth-grade student, and we're doing Eng- So if I have a fifth-grade student and we're doing English, then their English teacher is putting in the data, putting in the survey, how that student is doing pre and post.
Right, and how is it?
See a growth.
How is it characterized? For example, pre, they are, pre, they might say not proficient, and post, they might say proficient?
Yes, yes. It's on a scale of five.
It's on a scale of five?
One to five.
Okay, so it, does the average kid come into, let's just take literacy, which is, which is what I'm particularly concerned about at the moment.
Yep.
So is the average student, of course, there's multiple programs, but you can pick a program if you like, but is the average student like a one or a two, and they leave the program a three or a four? Is that the kind of impact you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And is, am I correct? Is that what happens there?
Ones or twos are kind of, that's, that's kind of low. Most of the time, the pre is around the two range.
Okay.
And typically, we see the post hovering around that 3.8 to four, some even higher, but on average. And then they have the data from the state, so they can take Wareham's program and compare our data to all the other 21st century sites across Massachusetts.
And is that what sounds like great growth from two to four, certainly is great growth?
That's why we're a demonstration site.
Excuse me?
That's why we're a demonstration site.
Does that translate into better NOEA and MCAS scores? Do we know that?
I don't think we'd ever, nah.
Because if it, if it doesn't, then it's, it is what it is, it sounds good, but it's not actually having the kind of impact that will translate into what, how they perform in the classroom.
Well, again, I'd love to come back in the fall, because I'll dig all, I have, I have a lot of data and I can get a lot more for you, because the 21st century grants, it's a federal grant through DESI, and it is one of the number-one grants across the country. And they have the data to prove that students who participate in after-school programming make a lot of growth.
Yeah. My, my fundamental problem is that I see the MCAS data, and what percentage of our kids are not proficient in reading specifically, okay? And it's way too high. So when I hear about great summer programs, and I think they're critically important, I wonder why it doesn't translate into better MCAS scores?
Well, I can, I have data, because again, when we write these grants every year, whether it's a competitive year or a continuation, I have to, in the questions, I have to supply data. So I have to look at every student, Andrea helps me. And we look at the MCAS scores of each individual student, and most of our students stay with us, so I can see the growth from them when they've been in second grade, third grade, fourth grade. I mean, I have students that graduated Wareham High School that have done CARE and Sale since they were in kindergarten.
I guess part of the problem, and maybe it's not part of the problem, you tell me, if you've got 400 kids and the system has 2,000, you're having an impact on 20%, which is great, you know, in terms of absolute numbers, but it doesn't, you could still have a really good impact, and you've got 80% of the kids who are not being impacted, and they're pulling down the MCAS scores. Is that a fair way of thinking about this?
Well, again, like I said, I would love a bottomless bucket of money, because that is the key.
Trust me, I am not criticizing you for not having more kids.
No, but I'm saying, what that, the key there is, is that we can only probably tap 20% because of the funding. Whereas if we had, if I could get more grants, and right now, my office is close to 900,000 in grants, then I could probably get more students.
So when, when Mr. Palladino, or Mrs. Cote, or, or Dr. Chandler identify kids?
Yep.
You're only able to take what percent of those that they identify?
I try to take all of them, all that they identify. I mean, when I send out the registrations.
Then I'm confused. You said if you had more money, you could do more, but they're not even identifying kids that, you're taking all the kids that are identified. So who, what kids would you?
But not every, okay, so let me, let me reframe that. We send out the registrations based on who has been recommended, as well as students who have continually done the CARE program, they're a priority as well. If they've been with us every session in the summers, they get their registrations. So unfortunately, it is kind of, there is a time crunch that they've got to get those registrations back before the program fills.
So.
Because we are limited to how many students we can take.
Well, that comes back to, but who registers? Do the kids who register, are those the ones that are identified by their principal?
Not all of them, but most of them, in the summer, yes.
So who aren't you taking?
Possibly students that didn't return their registrations in time.
You have no idea how many that, that is?
Well, right now, I have seven on the waitlist.
That's a, every kid is important, but that's a pretty small number.
Yes, it is.
So it comes back to, you've got 20% of the kids, and the other 80% are, are not reading proficiently. That's a gross generalization, that's a gross generalization, but the data suggests that what I'm saying is correct, despite the great work that you're doing with these 400 kids. Okay, I think I've beaten a dead horse.
April?
So to jump on your dead horse, I think that using it to, against MCAS data seems unfair, based on what I am understanding, what the program is to prevent students that have a higher likelihood of learning loss over the summer. Those are the ones that are being recommended for this program, am I correct?
Yes, that's, a majority of them, yes.
Okay. So I also think that, I mean, I'm, I understand the need for data and the need for funding with regards to MCAS. I don't think it's a make or break whether or not all of our students are literarily up to where they need to be. I think that some kids don't test well. They can read just fine, but the pressure of MCAS can be a lot for a lot of kids. I know that when I was, you know, subbing at the middle school, there were a lot of kids that were full of anxiety in regards to, to the test. So I know that that data in and of itself is potentially skewed by kids that are either anxious or just don't test well. And I helped with some MCAS alts, and I know that our percentage there has gone significantly down from like 8% to the under-two that they want us to be at. So just from my perspective, from my time at the middle school helping with that, I think that some, a lot of the stuff that we're doing is great. Would it be great if we could have every kid want to go to, or need to go to, a summer academic program? Absolutely. I also think that having some of those kids that don't have the potential threat of significant learning loss that would impact them restarting with their peers in the fall, some kids do need a brain break for the summer in order to be able to function better in the fall. So I do appreciate all that you guys are doing, but I don't think that it should be end-all, be-all in regards to MCAS data. So thank you.
So the traditional student who maybe, say it's a sixth grader who maybe failed English for the year, for a variety of reasons, they're told that they have to go to this, or they will be retained, or is this, everything's optional?
This is, nothing, nothing is, grants can't be mandatory, but the accelerated academy, those targeted students, they are highly, highly recommended by the principals of the school to attend the academy.
So in that case?
So when they're invited, they're coming. They're, very rarely do they not come.
Okay.
Yep. And on the middle school level, most of those students stay the full day and roll over to CARE. On a high school level, some of them do stay for Sale, and then some of them leave at 11:30.
So the accelerated academy is for more, the most struggling students, is that correct?
The failing, the ones that are.
The ones that are failing?
At risk of failing.
Of failing.
Yes.
They would go to the accelerated?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I think that's your half of the presentation. We move over to Ms. Fay.
Mine is not as exciting. So our extended school year this year, we're again running out of two locations. So pre-K through grade seven will be at Wareham Elementary School, and grades eight to our young adult, eighteen to twenty-two program, will be housed at the high school. We've been struggling with getting teachers this year, so we are a little bit short-staffed on the teacher end. We still have a couple of people that we're interviewing to fill some of those positions. Currently, we have 49 staff working in the summer program. That includes, again, the nursing staff, related services. We have eighty-nine kids as of today, so the number that is up here is actually incorrect. And we still have students moving in, foster, we have some students coming in from the new shelter. So we will have, those numbers will change a little bit between now and the beginning of the program. We're starting our program one week before Jane's programs are starting, so we're going to start on July 5th. And we run a five-week and a six-week program, and then a one-week boot camp for students who might just need a little bit of refresher before they go back to school in the fall. And that's all academic-based. The ESY program only runs half-day, so we're eight-thirty to 11:30. And we do have breakfast and the option to take lunch home, and we also have transportation. And the transportation will also take them to Best Friends, to the YMCA, to wherever they need to get to at that 11:30 mark, because that is tough for parents at 11:30, which is typically, as April pointed out, the middle of people's workday. And I think that's about it.
So if a student's on an IEP, would they never attend the accelerated learning academy and only attend the?
No, they would.
They can?
It depends.
Our grant, you know, also, we, our selected population is students with disabilities. It just depends on which program is going to be the best fit for that child.
And you and the administration?
Yeah, so, so through the special education process, the team would recommend the extended school year program, which is academic and its core and related services, for students who require that in order to maintain over the summer. So we would be running our program for the students that the teams have recommended. That, again, doesn't necessarily mean the parent needs to accept that program, the parent, and many parents, because of childcare, because of transportation, or somebody being home for the child when they get off transportation in the afternoon, do choose to go to CARE or to Sale. And Jane and I work together to make sure that if they require special education support, then I shift my specialty education support over to support Jane's programs.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
A quick question. I understand the program is physically taking place at the elementary school and the high school. How many of those 71 elementary school students are in fact middle school students?
Very few.
Very few?
I would say, because typically, the students who attend in the summer are in our self-contained programs, or substantially separate programs, are typically our largest population of students that attend in the summer, because they require that extra support to be consistent throughout the summer, so they don't have gaps when they're coming back into the school system. And that can be socially, routine-wise, or academic, or a combination of all three of those. So we don't usually get a lot of the elementary school students, and the numbers kind of start to taper off as they get older, because the high schools.
Elementary or middle?
Middle, I'm sorry. And also, at the high school level, it's typically our programs at the high school. Yeah, because a lot of the high school, once they get older and into those high school years, they don't want to spend their summer in a classroom. So a lot of parents, and a lot of parents travel, you know, send them to visit grandparents across the country and stuff, so it's difficult. So not everybody that we recommend, we probably recommend about twice of the number of students for extended school year that actually attend.
So unlike, unlike Jane, who rarely gets someone recommended who doesn't go, you have the opposite problem.
Correct. And I would love to have a full-day program, but again, it comes down to.
So you're about 100%, you're about 50%? Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Joyce?
So your number, the eighty-eight, I know you said it might change, but is that, how different is that from last year, the year before? Is it good, has it gone up, has it gone down?
So, gosh, this is my sixth, seventh year running it. So when I first, prior to COVID, I will say, we were running at about 125 students typically in a summer. Then COVID came. After COVID, we haven't seen numbers above about 110. So they're definitely dropping. And we've tried shifting, we try every year to kind of do something to make it easier for parents to register. We always have some kind of last-minute registrations, people lose the paperwork, or they forget until they see the buses start to go by. So we're very accommodating for families when they come back, and, and to get them in, even though it might be past the deadline. And then we've tried to make our forms electronic and make them accessible by cell phones, so that you don't have to have a computer necessarily. And so that's kind of streamlined a little bit, but I still see our numbers not as high as they were when I first started pre-COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick follow-up. Transportation is provided?
Yes.
So there really isn't any impediment to attending, is there?
No. I think it's difficult.
Only if your students are leaving at 11:30, somebody isn't home.
That's the difficult part, I think, for our program. And I've all, I've really wanted to expand our program to a full-day program, but it comes down to funding sources for that, because I think parents, a lot of parents choose CARE and Sale as an option because it is a full-day program. And I think it just, you know, a lot of people struggle with who's going to be home to meet the bus. And not everybody has the option of Best Friends or the YMCA.
Yeah, that's expensive.
Yeah, or even, a lot of people don't even have family members that can.
Oh, it's not expensive if they're low-income. The state provides vouchers, so that's.
They're also filling up pretty quickly, too, though.
Yeah. And pre-COVID, we used to have the childcare portion of the beyond-school time. So students would do CARE or Sale, not Sale, CARE, until 2:30, and then they would stay in the building with us until 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
And be a parent pickup. That was prior to COVID.
And how did COVID change that?
Well, when we shut the building down, we couldn't do childcare.
Okay.
And then when, when it reopened due to sanitizing, you know, the whole.
I'm got it, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Schmoll, I'll give you the option of either staying where you are, to do your presentation, or let Eric go next, and you get a 10-minute break. It's up to you.
It's, well, I have another presentation after.
Okay.
So back-to-back. So I'll just let Eric go.
Okay.
And then, why don't I just keep going?
Fine. That works. Thanks.
And then Eric can leave. He'll just knock something over his chair.
You owe me. It's good to be home.
All right. Eric, you're going to present on summer projects.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
All right. So summer projects this summer of 2023, as you guys know, is the two MSBA ARP projects, one at the high school for the boiler replacement, the other is the partial roof replacement at the middle school. And there's actually one other project, but I'll, I'll talk about that one after. What I, what's in your packet is just what was given to me and the team by DDS, who is the contractor for the boilers. It's just kind of an overview of the, the schedule and how long things should take during the whole project, during the whole duration of the project, I should say. So since school just ended today, both projects are going to start right away. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with Wayne with DDS, and they're going to start going on the boilers. So I think the first thing that they will do is just deliver all their materials, review the scope of work, and then start disconnecting all the gas piping, electrical, and get things ready for the main construction. Main construction will start two weeks from then, around the 28th, if everything goes according to the plan. And these dates might, may change by a day or so, it all depends on any hiccups along the way. So during main construction, a lot of cement pouring, that's just the pads that are on the, the boilers, they're on the pads now, probably won't be as big enough for the boilers that we're going to install. And then installation of the pipes, boilers, pumps, and water heaters will be part of this main construction. Also, throughout the building, they are adding, mixing valves into all the sinks, just so Also, throughout the building, they're adding, mixing valves into all the sinks, just so they have to be reduced, the temperature of the water has to be reduced down to 110 legally, so kids obviously don't scold themselves when they go to wash their hands. The main construction will probably take about three months. And then they will fire up the boiler right around October, make sure the system works out, test everything that needs to be tested. And then if everything goes well, there won't be a punchless spot. I'm sure there will be, just to make sure that they get everything all squared away before they close out the entire project. The boilers have been delivered. Wayne from DDS had sent us photos, so that, that's good. One thing to note, since we have the kitchen working all summer as well, the main focus is to disconnect the gas real quick. So the kitchen has its own water heater. So one of the main focuses is to replace that water heater as fast as we can. So the kitchen will be out of water for, well, out of hot water for about a day or so, so they can get back up and running to provide lunches for all the students in the, in the town, I should say. As far as this project is going, great line of communication with all parties. No hiccups yet, no animosity towards each other. It's going pretty well so far. So that's a good thing, especially in the beginning of a project. The cost of this, it was estimated at 2.4, or just over 2.4 million right now, as it stands with all the contracts. DDS contract is 1.1, well, 1.2 million. Left field has a not-to-exceed limit around 220,000. The architect is 164,000. So the total of that, without contingency, because there might be, we might run into some things that cost more or things like that. I think the contingency is 100,000. But right now, it's around 1.6 million. So there's savings on this, this project, as we're very thankful for that. Before I jump into the middle school, do you guys have any questions on the boiler project?
Jeff?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So you do realize Mr. Palladino doesn't turn on the heat until December 1st, so there's no worries about...
Yeah, no. I thought it was January, to be honest.
Is there any significance to the priority varying between normal and high? Should, is that a big deal?
No, no, I think it's just, I, I think that when you see, you mean, as far as the impact on the, the schedule?
Yeah.
I believe it's what I just spoke to. So just reconnecting that gas right away is just to, to get hot water over to the kitchen. So we noted that that's a big priority for us.
So we're telling them it's a high priority?
That that's a high priority.
So that they understand...
They know that they need to do that as quick as possible.
Were you really concerned about animosity between the subs?
No, no, not between the subs. I mean, I think, I don't know if there's any history with our OPM, architect, and contractor. So what I'm saying is, there seems to not be any. So we're all, we're all going smooth.
Good job to crack heads, you know, if necessary.
Oh, exactly, yeah. Well, they, it's all in the best interest of us, so, I mean, they should button up and make sure they don't do anything.
So the boilers have been delivered?
They have been.
Where are they physically?
They're at, I was, I would assume they're at the warehouse at DDS. They're not here.
Oh, they're not here?
No, no, they haven't been delivered here, but they have them, they've received them. So it's a good sign. I think they had a long lead time, so.
Yeah, you're right. You never know, and...
Especially now.
That sort of thing, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks. And then the middle school roof, partial roof replacement is pretty straightforward. I can just kind of break down, I guess, a little bit of what's going on. So as you know, in that, in that packet, you'll see the roof layout. So the idea is to, they're starting the same time, not tomorrow, but next week. The focus is to work on the plumbing, which just means the roof drains, get them in there, make sure that they're all squared away, and then the demolition of the old roof. So what it is, is that they're taking the PVC membrane that's on top of the roof, the insulation underneath it, and from what I'm told, there's actually, it adheres old roof underneath there. So any loose piece, they're going to grab and take out, and then they'll put like a vapor barrier down to make sure no moisture gets into the building itself or damages any of the structural roof. But from their experience, trying to rip up that old roof might cause more problems. So we'll just put the roof kind of on top of that. It won't cause any issue or anything like that, at least that's what I'm assured. It won't do anything, any significant damage or any damage at all. So they're going to work on section, I believe, F, which is our A wing. And then, yeah, J, then F is the, the main one, is the main focus. That's why we're doing it this summer. And then J and K. And then the town did approve for summer '24, for the entire roof to be done. So once this gets done, then we'll be right back into the swing of things of bidding process, process and doing that all over again. So the project cost is this, almost the same as the, the high school there, as far as savings. So we estimated 1.5 million. It's coming in right now as just a little over 1 million. So it's good savings there. It's good to see, it's good to see that it's not higher than what we expected. And then there's one other project that's going on during the summer, and this is at the elementary school. So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So, you said J, but J is not this summer, it's just F and K, correct?
I, so, I need to look back in notes. I believe J is part of it, and I just had my notes wrong. I thought they were only taking care of F and J.
Which gets to my, I mean, this is, in some ways, a silly question, but if you were walking on that roof, would it be very obvious, these, these demarcations that, that vary, you know, it's almost, if you were walking along K, would you know when you got to pee?
Yeah, because it's, it's about four feet higher.
So it's, this really recognizes changing, changes in elevation on the roof itself?
Yeah, we're looking at it like a bird's eye view, but every part of this is elevated in some way. The only one that is not, and that's what leads me to believe that they might be doing J, is because J and K are actually, they're the same, the same height.
Got it.
There's only like one little step up between the two, but they're the same elevation. So I, I'll look back in notes and make sure, but I'm pretty sure that it's, it's F, J, and K, not just F and K, which is what I thought.
Okay.
I mean, the, the square footage of J is so minuscule compared to F, so hopefully they just do it then.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Joyce.
Sorry, my question, before you move on to the next project, my question actually is on the first one you talked about at the high school.
Yep.
So pardon my lack of mechanical knowledge, but does the absence of the boilers have any effect on any air conditioning? I know there's not a lot of air conditioning in the high school, but there are some spaces.
I think the air conditioning are all condenser units, which means they're fed from the roof, so no.
No.
No, they're, it would affect areas that have rooftop units that are actually tied in to the water system, which would be like the cafeteria and things like that. But the cafeteria is, it's kind of shot right now anyway, so...
I'm just thinking about the kids at summer school.
No, so hopefully they plan accordingly, and they put them in, in AC rooms. But no, this, this project wouldn't affect any of those rooms. Not that I believe. I believe they're all condenser units fed electrically on the roof. Has nothing to do with...
What do you mean the cafeteria is shot?
So it had an issue with the compressor. We just got it repaired, so it should be good this year. But the idea is that we, well, Kristen found that IVAC grant, that Improving Ventilation and Air Quality, so we're going to use that money to replace that whole unit, hopefully next summer. That's a future project. The condenser, the compressor was, was shoddy, so we had that replaced. The coils that actually hold pressure for the AC are just, they're from '91, so it's, it's definitely seen its life. So we just kind of put like a really good Band-Aid on it to hold this over until we can actually replace the whole thing.
Duct tape.
Duct tape, yep.
June gum.
Duct tape, bubble gum, and, and prayers.
So just, sorry, to go back, so it does work, the cafeteria air conditioning, and it will work even in the absence of the boilers?
That one, no. That one's actually tied into the water. But I would have to look at the schedule and see how, how far out that, what's that?
Lunch?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because you need the water for the kitchen.
Well, that's on its own heater, its own water. So, yeah, it's actually, it, it works in our favor for that, it being kind of separate on its own. So the boilers were tied into the domestic hot water. Now, I don't know if that's actually, I wish Robbie was here, our HVAC tech, he could answer that question better than I can. But I'm pretty sure the domestic water might be tied into that rooftop unit. So yeah, without that, then you're not having AC in it. But then again, I don't, it's not all summer that they're without, so...
Oh, good, okay.
Should be able to fire that up and make sure that the kids are cool.
All right, thank you.
And then, going back to it, the elementary school, we had problems with insulation, as you guys are aware, with the, the split system, with that, that frozen pipe that, that cracked. So what it is in our, our B lower level, there seems to be just outside air coming right into the building, so the envelope is not sealed. So I reached out to OPM, Chad Hoxley, who is with Bacon Construction, he's the GC on the, the whole project, and just pinpoint where there's a lack of insulation. So what it seems to be, there's two columns that run in, well, let me take a step back. Is everyone familiar with the kindergarten entrance at the, the elementary school? Yeah, it's a big A-frame awning right above you. So that awning, where that meets the building, from what I'm understanding, there's two columns that run in, on the inside of the building, and there seems to be a lack of insulation in there, which would make sense, because the pipe that broke was in the classroom that was right next to the, the A-frame, right next to the entrance, and then Christine Ansel's office, which is on the right side. Those two rooms are always significantly colder. And then even if you pop your head up above the suspended ceiling and you take readings, it's almost identical to the outside air. So it's coming from there. We wanted to get this done over April and February break, but I think it's going to be more than just a week's worth. I honestly think they have to take that whole A-frame out, see what's going on in there, put insulation, so they need to do construction on the outside and inside. So the idea is just to get this done over the summer and then hold them accountable to it, because that's a, it was a big headache, and we want that envelope sealed in that building. We don't need cold air coming right into it during the wintertime.
So that would be no cost to the district?
No, no, that's, that's a hiccup on there, and so...
Right.
Yep. But that's it for this summer. Any questions on that?
I don't think so. I think you answered them all.
No, you included the fire suppression.
That would be for some, not this summer, for summer '24. So the MSBA, since we put in the, the statements of interest, so they kind of superseded anything else that we had planned. So those need to get done this summer. That fire suppression system, hopefully, we need to go to the Fall Town Meeting to find that, the, the money to appropriate the, the entire fund of the project. Hopefully, that gets approved, and then, yeah, we'll aim for a summer of '24 to get that done. The fire panels failing, we're told by John Kelly, the, the fire chief, so it needs to get done. So hopefully, it holds us, it holds up until we can get it fixed. But it's just because the MSBA projects came up and they, they just kind of took over, so can't have the boilers and that at the same time. And just with bidding alone, it would bog our central office down. I'm sure Kristen would thank me for not giving her two jobs on, on top of that, so... Yeah, and then the rooftop unit, that's a future project. So this is all summer '24, but that's the one I may know of before. So we put a big Band-Aid on it now. It should hold, it should hold for a couple of years, but the idea is just, if we have the grants and the funds to replace it, might as well just replace the whole thing. There's no point to keep putting a Band-Aid on this thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's seen its life, so... Besides that, just, I think that's it for me. And then, yeah, the rest of the roof will be summer '24 as well, so I'm sure I'll be here again to talk all about that.
So the fire suppression system and the fire alarm system are the same thing?
I believe so. From, in that, what I, in that packet, too, is the engineering, just the evaluation. So what I think they're replacing is all the mechanics to a fire alarm system, pole stations, the front control panel, everything. To be honest, I didn't dive deep into this, because I know it's next summer, and I have these other projects that's just been taking up a lot of time, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I'll stay up here, because I believe that, I don't know if we're going to that.
Do obsolete furniture while he's here?
Sure.
I owe you two favors.
Dr. Schwam gives her permission. So we had an obsolete furniture equipment list that would require a vote, so if there's any questions, we could ask Eric about that right now. So if you want to take a look at that list again. I had no questions, but does anyone else have any questions about that list?
I will note that, I, I know you guys would like to see these, they don't just go into the trash or anything like that. Everything, once it's deemed obsolete, that's when we can look around and see if we can try to get rid of this stuff. So when, a good example, this was an East Elementary School closed down. That became like our storage container for all the other schools. Before, we're going to give it back to the town. It was full obsolete equipment. So once it was deemed obsolete, I reached out to the YMCA, to local churches, to anyone to see if they wanted that furniture first. So whatever they grabbed, they grabbed. Anything after that, we deem it obsolete, knowing that we can't use it and probably no one could use it. So they're, they're just old, especially with this stuff that's in, on your list. That's old mine it, furniture that just stayed in there, so they're all just broken and they need to go, so...
April, April 1st.
Sorry, I know that I've asked this previously, not of Matt, but I know I've asked it before, and not necessarily in obsolete furniture, but when it comes to obsolete furniture, technology, things like that, I had asked for previously, anything that we do recoup expenses on, like if we are able to, anything that's not donateable, like a sellable item, I know with like some of the laptops or things like that. Anything, if there's ever a report that we could see any monies that we're able to recoup for things that are obsolete, I would like to see that at a future meeting.
I mainly deal with furniture, so I don't think that we would even get anything really...
I was looking at like the kitchen list. It looked like some of the things that are on that might be workable or fixable, so if, if any money, like if...
Yeah, of course.
But just in general, certain items that we know aren't donateable, but we are able to salvage, I would just like to know if we are able to recoup anything and what percentage that would be.
Yeah, so I know when we closed down East, there was some, I don't even know, there was just some special tools that only like certain people could get. But I know that we sold it for $300. It's not much, but I mean, it was just going to go...
Every little bit.
Bye-byes anyway, so it, a little bit helps. But yeah, that's it.
Jeff?
I'm trying to understand what may be a simple process, but maybe not. I'm a, an employee. I have certain equipment, furniture, whatever, that, that is in my office, classroom, whatever. And I decide that it's broken, it's ugly, it's whatever, and I want to get a new one. So I put in a purchase order. Stop me when I make a mistake. I put in a purchase order for a new one, a new thingy, okay? And someone signs it. It comes, and now I've got this other piece of equipment that is broken, ugly, I don't like. And at that point, it goes somewhere, and someone declares it obsolete. Is that a fair statement of how it works?
I don't believe so. I believe that anything that's...
It was supposed to stop me when I made a mistake.
Well, I just want to hear it all out. I do believe that it's inside a school, as far as furniture, too, that it would have to be deemed already obsolete by the principal before it can eat, before someone will even sign a purchase order or do anything like that, so...
Good news.
You know, it's not like some, like you said, oh, this is red, I want it blue, so it's just to get rid of it, so...
Can I just trash my table to get a new one?
I'm sorry, Dr. Schwam, did you want to say something?
I was just thinking, I just think it would be wonderful if you could get a new one. It would be like a, a dream to be able to say, oh, I'm sick of this furniture, let me get some new furniture, it just doesn't work that well.
I mean, I'm sure people have tried doing that, but like I said, there's, there's a lot of eyes on that, too, and we're...
Fair enough, but then, then you say to April, but we try and get the, the Y and other organizations to take this stuff that we don't want. And so is it really useless? Or is it something that people just don't want, and they want a new one?
I mean, we try to see things out till it's life, as you can see in these schools.
Why, why do we think someone, you know, I'm on the board of the Y. Why are we getting hand-me-downs from the schools that are, we don't think are worth having?
That would be up to them.
We had two closed elementary schools with older things, and the new build came with new things, so then we had things that were obsolete for that building, because you didn't want like an old cafeteria table stuck in the new school, I would think, so...
A lot of things are not...
Precisely what we've been accused of, you realize?
Of using the old things in the new school?
Of not, of not taking perfectly good stuff and reallocating it.
Gotcha.
And with that being said, if you bring something old into a new school, it's probably not up to fire code. So that's a real reason.
A filing cabinet has a fire code associated with it?
Yeah, I'm assuming, yeah. Or maybe not a filing cabinet. I'm sorry. I thought you meant like a wooden filing cabinet, if there is one up there.
All right. I guess, I guess we just need to be sensitive about.
Correct. No one can just say, I want to get rid of this, you know. It has to go through certain channels. I believe the principals will make sure that, yep, that is broken. And then the custodians as well, like, no, you can still use it. It still has some life in it. And then that's when it would get to me.
I made my point. Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
Do I have a motion to accept the obsolete furniture and equipment as listed in our packet?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose abstain 5-0-0. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Dr. Schwam, thank you for your patience. And you're up with learning loss, pandemic-related, and actions to combat that, and professional development plan.
Oh, I forgot to turn on. Hello again. So before I begin speaking about learning loss, I want to thank everyone for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to the Wareham Public Schools. Although times have, sometimes have been extremely challenging, I always put students first. And this can be seen demonstrated in every school, every day, by so many of those working here in Wareham. Learning loss became a concern for us March of 2020. Even though we built a robust online learning system, we knew that many would suffer. The structure of life as we knew it had been compromised. When all else might be falling apart, there are some things that are absolute, like going to school, a consistent schedule, friends you know, teachers that care. All of that changed. As we tried to navigate the opening of school in 2020, 2021, the rules kept changing and all of those, adults included, were thrown off course. Up until February of 2022, we were still wearing masks. And if exposed, there were rules about quarantine and fevers, colds, sore throats, and any other ailment that may be COVID. Absenteeism was problematic, understandably. We could not yet return to pre-COVID structures that our systems rely on to feel sane. Knowing all of this, there were many initiatives that were started to help our students gather themselves and achieve. So in the beginning of 20, or the summer, I guess, of 2021, '22, I can't even remember the years anymore, to be honest with you. But I started to collect the National Focus Area Standards for grids K through seven as a way to sort of focus our efforts into certain areas. Because if we were to look at all of the standards all of the time, it would be very difficult. And so I researched and looked across Massachusetts and across the country at the, at each grade level and what we could really pinpoint to focus in on with our students. From there, I took K to four in particular, and I shared focus area standards with every single assessment that could possibly be given in every grade level and the expected results of each of those assessments at the end of every year. And I handed that out to the leadership teams at the elementary schools. So that included the principal, the assistant principals, and the department chairs. They took that exhaustive list, and it was exhaustive, because I didn't want to leave anything out. And I wanted them to go around to their teachers to decide which of these measures best represent what we do every day and what are the, what do we need to add to those measures to make sure that each student has a quality experience when they, when they're in school. And as a result of that, these are the standards. I think you've seen these, actually, but... So this was the first document that I started. And it goes through all of the different elements necessary. So it's not exhaustive, but every year, of course, it gets a little bit, you know, more intense for English and for math. And it's, it's long. So I'm not going to, you can have a copy of that. But that's what started it. And then this was the second document as a result of that document that we started with. So this was math. And at that point, we were going to incorporate the NUIAMAP growth for math. We had been doing FAST assessment for reading and math. And that's very skills-based driven. And so in order to accelerate learning and to target these standards, we thought it better to change our assessment system to the NUIAMAP growth with also a skills-based assessment called, that we've been doing for a couple of years, called Oral Reading Fluency through NUIAMAP. Because the FAST assessment for our K, mostly for our K students, we had about 200 average a year. And in order to gather that data, we formulated teams of people so that the teacher wouldn't be influencing the student answers, right? So we wanted a kind of a clean collection of data. And if we got to one class at this part of the week, and then you have 200 kids, so they're moving through, and sometimes it was two weeks before you got to the final class, the 10th class of kindergarten, that we would rely on that data, but we knew that the data wasn't necessarily the same, right? Because you have two weeks greater time in school at that later class, right? So NUIAMAP had developed a voice recognition software where we could get all of our kids assessed in stations using the computer and the voice recognition software much more quickly. And the teachers liked the, the design of the system better online because they can, they can find the results more quickly. And then they have strategies and they help determine what area they fit in, what they need within those groups with their students. So it's pretty dynamic. But nonetheless, we then transitioned to the NUIAMAP growth because the middle school had been doing it for three years prior. And we were hopefully transitioning in that direction because now we have a consistent data set that we can use all through up to grade seven. And then next year, it will go up to grade 10, which is pretty exciting. So this was the second document that I gave to all of them. Of course, math is different when they're younger. But as you can see, kindergarten, these were the, all the different elements that need to be addressed, and the assessments, and then the expectations of those assessments at the end of the school year. So just as an example. So they all got this and were, oh, you know, a little bit overwhelmed. But from that, we were able to design an assessment calendar. And the standards drove the assessments. And there, and the formal, the NUIAMAP growth, and the NUIAMAP oral reading fluency, and the teacher-directed assessments.
The standards drove the assessments?
The decision for the assessment, yes.
That makes sense. Did the, did the standards drive the curriculum?
Yes, because it's practiced every day. So the standard and the curriculum have to match in order for two students to achieve as they move.
Exactly. So were we changing curriculum and I guess by, by extension, instruction essentially on the fly?
Not really, because we have groups. What we were fortunate about is that we had a pretty good setup beginning in 2017, prior to COVID. If we hadn't had that, then I think we would be in much, I think that it would have been much more difficult because we would be doing everything all at once. But because we had these practices already pretty secure in the way that we go about helping students, it was not a huge jump. I did purchase some other materials to support them, books and things like that.
I'm trying to imagine being a teacher and getting this exhaustive, as you say, list of standards. And the first thing I guess I would do, unless I, maybe I could do it off the top of my head, but I doubt it, is I would want to compare the standards to what I'm actually teaching, to make sure that they're fully aligned. Did, was that done? Or did you know they were already fully aligned?
We, we had a really good idea that they were aligned.
Okay. So if we already knew that, what was the value of handing all these standards to a teacher who already had curriculum set up to meet these standards?
Because they didn't have this. So from those standards and those assessments and the expectations at the end, we had a calendar that we could put in place and strategically identify precisely where every student is along their journey in every grade with the X.
Where they are and where they should be.
Correct. Exactly. So that, so this, from that exhaustive list, the team went out to their professional learning communities to talk to all of the teachers. They were all involved in creating this assessment calendar. There were some discussions, some, some were arguments about how many high-frequency words a student should have at the end of kindergarten, right? I insisted on 150. They were saying 50. We compromised at 100, right? So, and 100 is actually still a little bit high, which is good. I want, I want that to be the goal, is to be a little bit higher, because I think it just, it gives our kids an advantage. So the average is around 50 to 80 at the end of kindergarten, and ours is 100, is my point. So.
But if you have a curriculum designed to make sure that it's 50, and you set a goal for 100, 100 as a compromise, then you've got to adjust the curriculum just to get those other 50 words in front of the kid.
No, you just need to have the words available. And we had them.
Well, when you say words available?
Well, they're high-frequency words. So there's lists of words.
They don't get incorporated into the instruction?
Sure. That we have CKLA, we have decodables, we have all kinds of books available, and they're all embedded in them because they're high-frequency words. So they're everywhere. So yes, they're embedded, but the, but it's all connected. Everything is connected.
What you're saying is that they were always there. It's just a question of whether the assessment would reflect whether they got the 100 or they only got the 50.
Correct. But it also helped people see the direction that they were, or the focus that they were, needed to do during that timeframe so that they understood, oh, wow, we have to work on these skills specifically for this group of students.
Sounds like to go from 50 to 100 would inevitably take more time.
For some that weren't there, yes. And that's why we split out groups and we do what we do, which is quite busy, but yes.
And yet, you can't make time, make time more time. Time is already defined by the number of hours they are in the classroom.
You can focus that time to get where we need to go. And this assessment calendar helps people to do that. These are absolute skills that need to happen.
But that sounds like you have to reprioritize how you use the time.
Well, we.
Time is finite.
Okay, Jeff, you know what? I'm too tired. It's the last day of school.
I've had a long day, too.
And I just can't right now. I'm going to do my best and I'm going to try to address what I know, which is education.
I am sitting here trying to understand. I am not in any.
I get it.
Anything other than trying to understand.
There are certain absolute skills that every student needs to have at the end of every grade, period. The assessment calendar and all of the things that we do to enrich those kids' life along the way, doing that without assessing them leaves us at a disadvantage. So what we do is we have all of, we know this is where they need to be. And articulating that on this document has not been done. Other people across the state have asked me for this calendar and I have shared it. They don't have it. So the point is that to have these absolutes available to us gives us a really keen understanding of where every student is at, at very important times throughout their life at school that year. And it's been transformational.
So I understand the purpose behind that assessment calendar. I think that's part of the triad of instruction and curriculum and assessment. But I didn't see it for the middle school or the high school. Is that something in the works? Does it exist?
The middle school has a number of assessments that they already participate in. And they're also engaged with the NUIAMAP growth. And I have that data to share with you.
Okay.
But they don't, they're not as, at that point in their development, their writing, they're responding to reading, there's a whole list of other things that they participate in. And they gather data and have for quite a long time, actually, very effectively, as far as gathering the data and reporting that out.
Okay. Thank you. Joyce?
I just have a question, which I promised just one, but I think it's helpful if I ask it now. So you've showed the focused standards, you've talked about the assessments and what they're learning. Is, am I missing a piece? I'm not an educator, so I don't know this. So if I was to come into Wareham and I'm going to be a first-grade teacher and you tell me, this is what we teach, this is what we expect of a first grader at the end of the year, and this is what we're going to assess them on, do you then tell me, and this is how we teach it?
Yes.
You, okay.
Yes.
So that, I mean, we're not seeing that. That's okay. I just want to ask if that's, that's a piece of what you are, piece of this puzzle?
Absolutely. And through.
Everyone's teaching it the same way?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, but it also depends on the needs of the students that they're teaching.
Right. I understand.
So each of those are taught in the same way, depending upon the group and the needs of each of the groups.
Okay. But there is consistency?
Completely.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Which is tremendous that we had that prior to COVID. If we hadn't established those consistencies prior, we would be doing all of this at once. And I don't even think we would be here with this calendar and be able to articulate what it is we believe every student needs to have prior to entering the next grade.
Okay. Sorry, I have other questions, but I thought that one was important that I asked that.
Okay, April?
So is by figuring out where each of those students currently are as opposed to where they, curriculum-wise, should, quote unquote, should be, does that help to determine like that population of students that would be, that would go into these accelerated summer programs and things like that? So it all kind of ties in together?
It does. And the, the thing that's happened this year as a result of having this information is that parents and families have been able to understand better about what their students need. So there might be a parent conference with a kindergarten teacher and the kindergarten teacher might say, you know, we're a little bit concerned because by, by this time, your student needs to have 100 high-frequency words and they're at 50. And so, here, could you take this list home with you and possibly practice these with your child at home? And then the conversation becomes very targeted so that they can participate as well. And it's not complicated, right? It's just helping them to help their child. And it's also helped a great deal with IEPs and goal statements, because goal statements are sometimes hard to wrap your head around when you're trying to solve an issue. And having this information available helps people to really tighten up their goal statements and, and be able to say, by this time, as a result of this work, your, your child will be able to do these things, right? So it's, it's really been dynamic. There's been a lot of positive feedback. People have talked about putting it on report cards and things like that as a result of this year. But they know their kids really, really well and what they need.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
In another piece with the assessment calendar is that teachers are taking that data and they're, they're working in their, in their grade-level teams and looking at students and putting them in groups based on the needs that these assessments are showing that they have. And they're using that boost time to make sure that these kids are getting extra interventions in the areas that they're falling behind. And it's also allowing for teachers to talk about exactly what you're asking is, you know, how are we teaching these skills? And if you're having more success than I am, what are you doing differently than from me? And that, the survey that, that Andrea put out, a lot of the feedback we got was that the teachers really appreciate having that time and it's been really beneficial to them. So.
Thank you.
So they're doing the practices and sharing their practices and looking at data. I mean, I went, I just stopped in at the school for whatever, and their second grade was meeting and the, on the board was all the data for all their kids. And they were all talking about how, what, when, where, like they're really having these deep conversations about how they're going to help kids. So this is the kindergarten oral reading fluency. That measures phonological awareness, word recognition, listening, and picture vocabulary. That's the skills-based assessment that we do. And the top are the winter results when they first provided that assessment. And the bottom scores are the fall results.
So we didn't get this in our original packet, is that right?
No, you didn't. Because I was just, yes, you didn't. It was, it was there, but it was a PDF. So you couldn't click it, I don't think.
So I can't see that far, sorry. So could you summarize that?
I can make it bigger. Hold on. Let me try to make it bigger.
Jeff?
I thought you had a question.
Well, I mean, this looks fabulous. And yet, we don't have fabulous NUIA results. And yet, we don't have fabulous NUIA results.
Our NUIA results are pretty good.
Well, but you said at one point to me, or I don't know, that the correlation between NUIA and MCAS is 100%.
Last year, it was. And that was for fifth, that was for fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. So we don't
I don't remember that. I don't remember that, but
Well, we don't, and we don't have kindergarten MCAS.
I understand that. I understand that.
All right.
But if we're doing NUIA in K through 2, it's not gonna suddenly cease to correlate when you get to 3, correct?
We hope not, yes. I mean, I've had one really tight year where it's been, I want to see again this year. I want to make sure.
So these are kindergarten results, correct?
But this isn't NUIA. This is, it is a add-on. So this is the skills.
It's NUIA.
It's a NUIA product, but it's not the MAP growth.
All right.
Sorry. I'm sorry, but
Don't apologize. It's just my ignorance, but I'm just, it says NUIA, so, but you're saying it's a
Oral reading fluency.
Okay.
So it's skills-based.
So if we see, you know, the vast majority of kids either meeting or exceeding all these categories, then first grade, second grade, third grade, as long as we continue to do a great job, should be, should produce excellent results, and third-grade MCAS should reflect those excellent results. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Did these, did these results surprise you?
Not for this particular measure.
And is this the entire kindergarten class?
Yes.
I feel like I must be missing something, and these results are so good.
Well, can I, I mean, you're talking about, I know what you're saying. And you're saying, why doesn't this just translate up to third and fourth grade? And, you know, as you're progressing through the grades, it becomes, literacy becomes more complex, as you know. And students are gonna start to struggle that may not struggle with, you know, letter identification. And, well, there could be lots of reasons why, and we try to figure out why that is, and we try to catch them before they fall too far. But literacy is complex, and individuals struggle with it if they're dyslexic or for other reasons. And so I just, what I'm trying to say is
Here's a good question.
I think it becomes more complex and then becomes more challenging for some students than for others.
Do these results include special education children?
Some. Most of all, inclusion and some of the sub-separate programs.
So most?
Mm-hmm. This, though, this is the MAP growth.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Can you make this one bigger?
No, unfortunately. Well, maybe. I'll just have to scroll. Hold on. I can, but it just, you'll see one at a time, which is fine. So this is the foundation skills, language and writing, literature and information, vocabulary, and functions are what's being measured in MAP growth. You see, there's a significant difference in what's being measured, right? From kindergarten, this test versus kindergarten, the skills test. Same company, different skills.
But it's also different students?
No, same students, kindergarten. If you look at this kindergarten group, it's the same kindergarten group that did the MAP growth. They also did the add-on oral reading fluency. See what I mean? So I'm just, I'm
But this is still literacy. Below is the math, correct?
Right, but it's a standards-based rather than skills-based.
So, and the percent at or above is significantly lower?
Correct.
So educate me, if nobody else, what's the difference between standards-based and
Skills.
Skills-based?
So a skills-based test is, do you know this letter? Do you know how this letter sounds? How many, how fast can you read this sentence? Do you write those kind of skills? Where language and writing is identifying vocabulary, and how well can you write a word, and how well can you write a sentence? And how much, if you read this bit of literature, how much information have you retained from that literature? And how, right?
Okay. Neither both skills, but I get it. Okay.
Well, except, well, okay.
That's my problem, not yours. Okay.
It's a higher level of learning and assessment.
And what do these numbers tell you?
So the RIT score is the normed reference score.
Well, I guess my question is more, so when you analyze these
What does it tell us?
What, yeah.
We have some work to do.
Well, I mean, there's a huge
It seems like it, but I just wanted to know what your interpretation of those numbers are.
Yes. It tells me that we've been analyzing and looking at high-quality instructional materials more so, like more of a program. We did a lot of work in science of reading this year specifically, but we're adding another layer of that element next, this coming year, as well as looking at a program where we can put more books that seem to have disappeared. Like, we need more books. We need more stuff, so people can read.
But these columns are really significant because if you compare the second and third column, moving right to left, excuse me, left to right, the second and third look like we're doing okay, right? You look at the fourth column, the NUIA column, that says, eh, not really that good, but not terrible.
Right.
And you look at the MCAS column, and now you're comparing 43 to 34 and 48 to 18.
Right.
That falls off a cliff, so
Comparatively, yes.
So that's a problem. So that says there isn't a correlation. Right? There isn't a correlation between the NUIA MAP growth reading numbers and success on NUIA, and absolutely no correlation on success on MCAS. That's what this is saying.
Can I ask a question?
We didn't have NUIA last year, so, and those are the 22
I'm comparing 48 to 18.
Right, so we didn't have NUIA at all for fourth grade or third grade last year. It was fast, so
So Jeff, I think that the 48 is the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrea, the 48 for grade 4 is the current grade 4?
Correct.
The 18 was last year's grade 4.
Grade 4, correct.
Okay, now, you can do this, but we'll see. Let's see.
What I want to know is
Those are comparing two different sets of students?
That's two different sets of students.
And there's no
But we're gonna see how this set of students does on NUIA compared to MCAS. And we'll have that data.
Fair enough, but the N is still pretty large.
That's large, right.
So you're not gonna expect a huge difference from year to year. It's not like we're talking about 10 kids. We're talking about 200 kids.
Do we know the percentage of families that opt out of MCAS? And does that impact what their score would be comparatively? Or is it just the percentage of, not the total number of students, but the number of students minus any potential opt-outs?
We have almost none.
I don't think we had any opt-outs.
I don't think any, really?
If the Commissioner of Education was there, he would say there is no opt-out. It is a requirement.
I just know that in a lot of, well, I know it's a graduation requirement. I just know that in a lot of, and you can take this with a grain of salt, a lot of mom groups on Facebook, you know, that there are other districts and people in other towns that, you know, when their kids are having issues or when they feel strongly about what MCAS is and how they feel about it, that they, there is a lot of, I didn't know where it fell in our district, because in a lot of other districts that I follow, it seems like there's a significant amount of people that
You can actually find that, though, right online, that data? Because in the participation rate, it's listed in every district. It's like you get points for, or minus points, depending upon how many students participate. And it will say 98 or 99 or 80.
I just wasn't sure if that was a possibility that would impact, but where you said it's the two different years, that
I just got one more question.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more quick thought. I take your point about 22 MCAS versus 23, et cetera. But let's ignore MCAS for the moment. At 202.9 for average R1T, that's right in the lower expected R1T.
Correct.
Right?
Many of them are. Do you notice that?
But my point is that if 48 is the NUIA, forget MCAS, if 48 is the NUIA for fourth grade, that means we've got 52% that aren't at or above.
Correct, which is why I think we have a lot of work to do.
No debate. But that's my concern.
That's my concern.
That the NUIA MAP growth reading is suggesting, well, the average is okay. But the average isn't okay if you've got 52% not proficient or less.
Well, who's, the average RIT?
Is 202.9, right?
Right.
Which is within the expected R1T.
Expected, our average RIT for fourth grade is 202.9.
Right.
The expected is between 202 and 209. So I would argue we need to be up closer to the 209, which, because I would like that 48 to change to 70 or 80.
We're all on the same page. I guess what I didn't understand is the significance of seven points from 202 to 209. Is that's really significant?
Yeah, like if we were at 209, we'd be like 70%?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so
It's significant.
I sit corrected.
And we happen to sit right in the, right, with the exception of first grade, where we have the 51%, where we're halfway, midpoint.
So no one has an expected R1T of 150. I mean, that's a meaningless number in this scale.
Right.
Got it. I couldn't, that didn't, that wasn't obvious when I looked at this.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. In the interest of time, Andrea, do you want to move on to middle school and high school? Or do you want to stay, do you have more stuff you want to say about the elementaries? I'll leave it up to you.
I'm here for you.
Could you put the math up just briefly again?
Which one?
The one you, the one that was below the literacy.
The math?
Yeah. Yeah, that we didn't get to look at before tonight. Thank you.
Similar, really?
Yeah, it is. Third grade's even worse, but yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can you share that stuff with us?
I can.
Thank you.
One other question. Do you think that part of the reason is the at-home piece? I feel like when someone is in kindergarten and first grade, even up until second grade, they're getting a little bit more help at home, a little more parent involvement. And by the time they start into like third, fourth, upper elementary towards middle school, there's, you know, parents are like, oh, they can do it by themselves. And do you feel like that might be any sort of impact on where the numbers are dropping off? As opposed to
I think the content becomes much more complicated. Because you can see these, as kids move through, you see these ebbs and flows where there's a push in expectation and the numbers become lower. And then you see them start to rise again. So I think it's just preparing our kids
I'm sorry.
Adequately. Thank you.
Second grade, 187.4 is in the higher portion of the expected R1T, correct? That would, based on what you said earlier, that would suggest that 187.4 is not a bad result.
It's an average result, yes.
Okay, it's an average. But 46 is not good for NUIA?
Right. Well, 46% at or above.
Because you got 54% or below at or above. Okay. You've been very indulgent, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So at the middle school, they've done a number of things. They've addressed real-world experiences for performance-based assessment, which is part of their school improvement plan. They use all kinds of data to communicate, collaborate, and create school improvement goals. So they triangulate data, they look deeply at it, and they use a myriad of different data points to have this conversation. They use NUIA quite a bit. I don't want to read this all to you, but they've done a number of things at the middle school to address learning loss. And now we can show you the data. I am so excited about it. All right. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Similar or somewhat different?
Why isn't expected a range? It was for elementary.
Because they don't have the same expectation calendar. So I took the actual NUIA information from a document, and I put that on. And that range will not be there next year for K to 4 either. It will be an absolute. I found a document with the absolute where I didn't have one before, so now I'm using that document. Putting the last year's MCAS scores in here was just testing myself. It's kind of like a bit of a gamble. I don't know what the results are gonna be of our MCAS this year, but I think it will be really curious to look back at the
Expect them.
I guess we'll get them for, just for us to look at and to look for any discrepancies. But I also want to point out, I guess we can look, if you look at grade 6 at or above 55%, last year on MCAS, 28% were
Exceeding or met.
Exceeding or meeting. So that would be a significant jump. And I'm hopeful that that's accurate.
So you're taking the 28 from grade 5.
I'm taking the 28% from
Those same students are now in sixth grade.
In grade 6, so they're the 55%. So let's see.
That's what I think we're seeing. Like, does this actually give us the information that we need? And will it come out that way? 39%.
39%. And if we, going back to the previous one where we were talking about that fourth grade, the third grade was around, and I think 30% or so.
38, maybe?
So
So what's a better idea of the correlation next February, October?
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see.
It'll be interesting to see, and I put it out here as a point of conversation and to say, let's see what happens, right? When we look at, we'll take these scores that I have here, and we'll compare them to the 23 MCAS exceeding and met percentages.
So right now, with the students like in the NUIA that have a score that is not ideal, let's say, you're telling me that the middle school has these various, you've had a list up there before, they will identify some of those students, or hopefully all of those students, and then figure out ways within the school day
Correct.
to address those issues?
They do. They have Viking block, they have intervention, they have, you know, all different kinds of groups that they make happen to address those issues.
Okay.
So my math says, yes, 28 to 55 says something, but 44 to 55 is an 11-point gain, right? So therefore, 29 might become 40.
You lost me there. I'm sorry.
Since You understand?
I think I understand.
Okay, so we got an 11 percentage gain in NUIA.
Yep, okay.
So if we get the same 11 percentage point game from 28, it'll become 39. So I said 40, but I meant 39.
Okay.
Okay? So we're not gonna get 55 for MCAS. We'll hopefully get 39.
Which is still trending in the right direction.
I see. At the very least, at the very least. Yes, I do.
Because 44 became 55, and that's obviously very nice.
Right.
Unfortunately, Unfortunately, my head looks at the MCAS 39 and says, I've got 61 who are not, who are less than proficient. So.
But, but we want to be tacking in the right direction.
Amen. Yes.
Is there evidence from other districts that have been using NUIA that, that it does track that way?
Well, there's evidence from our district with the middle school because we've had NUIA at the middle school. I think this is the fourth year. And so last year, when I posted the MCAS aside the NUIA, it was exact. So I thought this year, I would take a little bit of a risk and say, let me see how many kids exceeded and met in last year's MCAS, and then let me see how many exceeded and met or, or were at and above in NUIA. So that, because last year it was, it was almost exact.
So you're saying it went from being exact to not? So.
No, this is the different year. Last year's NUIA, so last year's NUIA.
55 to 39.
And last year's MCAS. And now, so what I'm doing is I'm trying to say that possibly we can predict a direction through this. And not only that, but our middle school gained an accountability rating from, they've gained every, every year over the last three years or since 2019, because there's a, there's a couple of years that we can't count, right? So since 2019, their accountability, I think, was 16. Then it went up to 26, and last year it was 33, right? So we keep, we keep, we're moving in the right direction.
Right.
So.
But so then you do have the NUIA test scores from last year for these students. We're just not seeing them.
No. I have, I have the fifth, yes, I have, I don't have fourth for the fifth.
Or at least two grades.
But I have two of them, I do.
Right. So if you put them next to each other, what would they?
I'll have to look. There are all these reports that I download.
But that's, I mean, I think that would be pretty valuable, right?
Yeah.
I mean, to, to compare the same kids from last year to the next year, right?
Yeah, I could do that. I could do that.
Yeah, that would be valuable. All right, I see what you're saying. Yes, absolutely.
And we've seen that, you know, in years past.
Yes.
I know, I know you have a lot of numbers you're crunching, but that, those, that would be a comparison of the same students that last year and this year. That seems to me like it would be really valuable.
Well, and prior to this year and then the year before that, I was invited to come to school committee to provide data updates, and I have not been in the last two, two years. This is the first time I was asked to present this data.
I just assume if you're presenting, there's data involved.
I know, but I would be, I mean, I'm happy to come at any time that you would like me to and report. But as you can see, the meetings are long.
Right.
I think people get nervous about that, so.
Well, but just going forward, anytime you, you're going to show us a number, if you have the number from last year to show, I mean, hopefully it's showing improvement, that's really helpful.
I'll go look at that tomorrow and just gather it.
Well, you don't have to do it tomorrow.
Well, I will though, probably. It's my safe space, really. And there's math for the middle school. So the high school. There's been a lot going on at the high school for a number of reasons. The areas on the left have to do with what they've done internally. They've redesigning the course content for humanities. Eighth grade went, attended PD in the fall to discuss how to enhance their MCAS scores. They have a enhanced Viking block and enrichment program to help students with their, wherever they're struggling, wherever they may be struggling. Teachers participate in peer observation. They have an improved student support council where they collect a lot of data and the schedules are consistent and they have a lot of meetings. There've been additional guidance counselors and social workers, which I know you are aware of. And then there was another dean assigned to the high school, which I think has been beneficial for their success overall. I've been busy applying for a lot of grants this year, specifically focused in the high school, on the high school. And so we've received a targeted assistant grant for $25,000, and we were able to hire an accelerated core ELA teacher. It was late because the money was not awarded in a favorable amount of time, but she began in March. And she's using high-quality instructional materials, which is a program called StudySync that also the middle school uses. And so she's been fantastic helping kids catch up, although we wished we had had her earlier. We just didn't have the funds. Another grant that was competitive that I, that I applied for with a lot of help, obviously, in collaboration, received about $480,000. And that is to continue with the teacher that we received this year with the tag, so we can continue to keep her into the next year, as well as hire an accelerated core math teacher, work with a co-teaching so that we can really focus in on our students with disabilities who are in inclusion. We need to do a lot of work there. Our data is way out of whack for those particular students. And then we're working with the TNTP Accelerated Network Group. The IB Inclusion class helped us a great deal. The department is extremely excited about that opportunity. And so two teachers, a general ed and a special ed teacher are working together to create the curriculum this summer. And then they will start that process. There are eight so far students that have elected who are inclusion students to take that class. They're very excited about the opportunity, so that, that's really nice to hear, and they're more queued up for that class. And we're purchasing two high-quality instructional materials, all grant-funded. We do not have the kind of funds that these programs cost to be able to have them here and where hand, but this grant was able to help us with illustrative math, which is the name of the program, for math, and then StudySync for English. We're enhancing professional development and then another grant for $40,000 that I received for genocide education, because genocide education became law in Massachusetts last year, and then Governor Baker allotted money. And at that point, we were able to get that grant as well. And facing history and ourselves will be in next year. And we've had a group of teachers working on units to insert education in there, which, and then we also got some, another grant to have effective school solutions come in to work with our TLC student population who needed some clinical psychological support. We're teachers, educators, and sometimes our kids need a lot more help than that. And so we've had two clinical psychologists in since February, working with, I'd say, about 25 students. They meet three times a day. They have a schedule. They reach out to families. They go to homes. They talk to families. They have, there's a very precise way in which they are electing to help our students. And so we're looking closely at that to see the success rate of that. And we've also have a partner grant with Buzzards Bake Coalition that will start this coming year with a lot of hands-on science-type environmental courses. They're quite a dynamic group, so they're very excited to work with us. We're very excited to work with them. They've already met with the high school teachers. It'll be science and art. So there are a lot of different disciplines that can jump in to that experience.
You had mentioned that there's between internal and external things happening here. I know initially when the MCAS scores came out, the high school didn't do that well. The state did dictate to us in some capacity, did they not? And is that up here or not?
I've been in.
So Andrea's done incredible amount of work in this area, working with the state and able, and getting from them financial support and also resources of people coaching that can come into the high school. So I'm, I'm really excited about what we're doing and optimistic about the results we're going to get. Andrea and Scott have been working with Mike Murray in the English department, and we have the TNTP coming in to provide coaching. And the money that Andrea was able to get, the $480,000, is going to provide us with the money to pay for the new StudySync curriculum that teachers will be trained in and will be able to use. We'll be able to bring back the core English class that's going to provide support for many of our, our students that need the extra support. So what's happening at the high school, I think, is terrific. The work that Andrea has done along with Scott and the English department, I think is going to give us some results that we're going to be, that's going to be pushing us in the right direction.
That's great. What is TNT?
It's an accelerated learning network. So basically, what, they're an external consulting group, basically, that, so what's, what I like about working with the state now is that they're hiring really high-quality people. So they put out a, just like we do, we put out a posting and say, we need vendors to apply for, right? And then they analyze and assess them and they hire them. Well, TNTP did some research on the difference between remedial and accelerated learning. And they've spent a lot of time creating tools that we can use to help accelerate learning. So, because remediation doesn't necessarily work, is what they're saying. And they have enough research that, that I would say they're probably right to a large degree, because it's all about how we scaffold that instruction. So if you're in eighth grade, but you're at sixth grade, you still need to teach eighth grade standards, right? Is basically what they're saying. We need to be prepared to teach kids where, where they are and not, not go backwards.
So did TNTP, does the state dictate that we have to use that, or do we have a choice to use that?
No, we, they do not dictate it. But what I try, what I did this year was I went to every single, I think I just missed one. So every single month, I went to a webinar with these people. Like, I was at everyone, and I wanted to know everything about them. And I pushed back and I asked a lot of questions. So that was that. Like, I needed to fill my head with it so that I understood what they were asking. And then we were able to apply for a network. And so we applied for the network, and that network includes the work of TNTP. But in the meantime, I reached out to them separately to ask how much it would cost for them to come to us without the state being involved. And it was $50,000 for two days or something like that. And I was, I was like, we, so I sent that quote to the Department of Ed. So I sent, I said, what, you know, like, what are we supposed to do with that? We can't possibly. And so then they had a network that we could apply for, and we were accepted into this network. And the network actually provides us with a coach. So the, the coach came already on May 26th. And together, we all went to five or six different classrooms. That was a tough time because of where everybody was in the schedule, but we went to all these English classes, and they have a tool that you use to observe. It's not for evaluative purposes. It's just to observe. Where are we? What are we doing? What do we need to do? How do we, you know, how do we change our focus and things like that? And so they'll come four times, I think, throughout the year, and then they're available once a month through Zoom to conference and help to just tweak and redesign a little bit of what we're doing and where we're going. And I think they'll be really helpful. The high school was very receptive to, to the coach that came. And so that was a positive, it was just a positive experience overall, which I think was good. So.
Jeff?
$480,000 grant. Is that a one-year, multi-year?
Three.
Three-year grant. Okay, so.
We need to be all better.
So you're spending $160,000 each year?
It actually goes like, it was, because it was late coming, it was $74,000 this year. Then it's $230,000 the following year, and the year after that, it's $178,000.
So in that.
It's a little, it's a little over 480, but.
So take that, the middle year, which was the big number. Where will that money be going? Who, who, what will get that money?
There are, there are a few areas of focus. Two, staff members.
So we will be hiring two new teachers.
We have one already.
Okay.
And we'll keep her.
Okay.
And hire someone else.
So we'll have, we'll get two new teachers doing new things.
Correct.
Okay? And that leaves, I don't know, about another $100,000 for the second year. And where will that $100,000 be going?
Well, we did $50,000 and $50,000. So we have $100,000 going to the staff members.
Okay, that, okay.
We just figured.
Now, that means you.
So there's, there's 130 left, 130,000 left from 230.
230? Okay.
So then.
And where will that 130,000?
Professional development will go to part of it. We had to buy.
Who gets, when you say professional development, what, who gets that money?
Whoever's providing the professional development. So we have internal people who would be providing it, and we have external people who might be providing it. We have a, I'm looking into who specifically will be able to help us the most right now.
That's a lot of money.
No, that's not all. I'm not done.
Okay.
So we also had, we bought illustrative math, which was $51,000, plus $8,000 for their professional development. We had StudySync. We paid for part of that of the 74,000. Yes. It is approved by TNTP and the Department of Ed.
And what classes will be using this curriculum?
All eighth, ninth, and 10th math and English. And they're also going to do NUIA.
And it's, and it's replace, oh, these, but these aren't assessments. These are, this is curriculum.
Correct.
Right? And it's replacing existing curriculum?
It's, what we've done at, what they have done at the high school are textbooks and units, right? So, and what Mike Murray has done this year is he's looked very closely at StudySync and what it offers and if it aligns to what they already, so with novels and things like that. And he, the whole English department actually is really excited about this opportunity with StudySync because of what it gives them in their instruction and how they can go about helping kids.
Guess what I'm getting at is pre-COVID, the English department, I'll get to math, but the English department always had excellent results on MCAS. Excellent. I was around for all of them. I applauded them.
Been around for nine of them, so.
Okay, we share the same history, okay? And it was a source of great pride that the English department got these great results. And then the math department, under Mrs. Kavicki, she's graduated from, from math department chair to assistant principal, but turned itself around and they had really good numbers too. So why is it that we need new curriculum to improve what's going on in the high school when things were going just fine pre-COVID, and now we suddenly have to replace the curriculum when we were getting great results with the old curriculum? What's changed?
Well, I.
Were they great, were they great results?
The English department? Absolutely.
I'd like to see them compared to the state averages, Jeff. I bet they weren't.
Yes, they were great compared to the state average.
I have them. I mean, I've looked. In 2018, we were doing the old MCAS test, and so we were doing the old MCAS test, and eighth grade was not part of the high school in 2018. And that was the best year in my history that we had. And we were still, I mean, we were okay, but we were not, I mean, we're, we still can do better. So we were, we were great for, for what we, where we had been. And that's worth celebrating.
I'm going to have to pull my old.
Yes.
It's all in my computer, but.
Were we, wasn't there a distinction of MCAS? I mean, we, I forget what it used to be called, but the high school. No, no, it wasn't before you.
No, it was MCAS.
Yeah, it was MCAS. I forget the, I forget the term.
Math wasn't as good as English.
Right.
But Eng, all right, whatever.
We had an accountability rating of 48, I think, in 2018, and it's now at eight.
Okay, the bottom line is, you're both convinced we need new curriculum at the high school in order to be successful.
I wouldn't say we need new curriculum. This is additional.
Spending $100,000.
I understand that. This is additional resources and training for our teachers to give them what they need to do the job they need to do. And this is, this is curriculum that has been recommended by the Department of Education as meeting the requirement.
Excuse me if I don't.
Well, I mean, and Andrea and I have looked at it too. And, and it, it does, it does provide resources that I think teachers will appreciate and be able to use effectively.
You're the educator, I'm not. I got it.
And then, just for your benefit, when I mentioned illustrative math to Kim Kavicki, she indicated that in her prior district, she was very excited about that opportunity for our teachers, and, and said that she had used it in her prior district.
She was talking about the Boston Charter School?
Is that where she was before?
Oh, before that, she was in Atlanta, and that was a year, many years ago.
Yes. She was very excited. So you might want to talk to her about it.
Okay.
So I didn't just like, you know, I cha, I, I wanted to see, would this be beneficial? Would it be helpful? Because these were recommended, and they all agreed that it would be very helpful for them. So it wasn't necessarily a decision. It was just saying, hey, what do you think? So. And just for FYI, because evaluation obviously is extremely important to teaching and learning, we formulate, we generated 1,554 forms on Teach Point, which are observation forms done by evaluator. And the number of, I included those forms for each school, that, school that was generated, the number of teachers, and the average form per teacher in each school, noting the visits. And then, the bottom list are the number of evaluators at each school, and the average each evaluator has on their plate to evaluate. And the, the focus areas that were indicated on Teach Point, the things that we responded to most often in these forms, the focus indicators were standard-based lesson, child and adolescent development, student engagement, safe and supportive learning, behavior management, families, communication, and professional learning. Just interesting.
Jeff?
So, I actually like those numbers, the average N per evaluator. They're doable.
Reasonable.
They're reasonable. If they were twice that, I'd be really concerned. So were the results of the observations, what you would expect in terms of a bell curve?
They're probably more in the proficient.
So we had.
Average proficient.
Some, a small number of exemplary, a large number of proficient. And a small number of, we did have a small number of not proficient.
I'll have to look again to be absolute.
Okay. Cause that would be, that would be interesting data. Cause there was a year a long time ago where everybody was proficient. Actually, not one year, multiple years.
Yeah.
That would be interesting data with obviously no names or teachers associated with them.
I just thought that this was interesting.
It is interesting.
So I do have the professional development, but I also know that it's late. And you have that presentation. So rather than me going through that, although I'm very happy.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think as chair, if anyone had a question regarding what we got, feel free to ask it right now, and we'll leave it at that.
That's perfectly fine with me. I understand you're trying to run a tight meeting.
That's out the window. No, my only question is, can you, and all I meant by that is, it's already quarter nine, so.
I know.
Could you send us the slides that you showed tonight, but we hadn't received previously?
I can, yes.
Okay, thank you. That would be helpful.
I was trying to get to the, the problem was, everybody was doing MCAS, and then they were finishing with the NUIA. So I didn't have it closed until later. So I will definitely get it to you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Just if you could send them.
And I'll also get you the comparison, cause I'm curious.
Please don't, don't stay up late to do that.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Mr. Chairman, I just, the work that Andrea's done on our PD is, is terrific. And I just want to point that out. Yeah, I, it, it provides our teachers with a great opportunity to really take advantage and improve in their instruction. And it really is an exemplary program. I've been in a lot of different districts, and it's really well thought out and well done. And she puts in, I mean, she puts in time, she's put in so much time this year getting ready for next year. And you know, if you ever had to do PD, how you can't be, you know, two weeks out and say, I gotta start planning on this, cause you're gonna get nowhere. And she, she puts the time in, the thought necessary, well in advance, to put things together for our teachers. And it's really a well-done program. So please look at it. And maybe, hopefully, she'll be able to do that presentation, cause you'll have a lot of good questions, I'm sure.
Yeah, and the survey results from staff were really key, because PD is the bane of my existence in the history of my job. And so the, the PD results and the comments that were given were.
Favorable.
Were quite nice. They're like the best I've ever received. And so, that's nice too, but it's pretty dynamic. And it's a logistical nightmare, but worth it. Right, for the results, so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your work. All right, next up, we're gonna give her five minutes. Kristen Flynn.
Way too many transfers.
Good evening. So tonight, I have our, our usual monthly report for the month of May. We're coming to the end of the fiscal year, so we are trying to make sure that we end with a.
Bang.
With a zero balance or, or greater in the, in the local budget. So that's where a lot of our effort has been over the past month or so. And I do have to start by saying that, you know, a lot of people have done a lot of work to help get, to help get this budget understandable for us all, myself included. We froze the budget in a lot of departments. Principals, directors had to sacrifice some things. But I think, you know, I'm hopeful that it's going to work out for us in the end. It was very difficult having, coming back from COVID years, perhaps not having a school finance director for some periods of time. So to try to, you know, a new administration, to try to, you know, understand this budget and make it work for, for us was a challenge. And, you know, a lot of people have done a lot of, a lot of hard work on it. So it, basically, in May, you see the typical reports. One thing I want to know is, the total budget is about 83% expended. That's gonna change a lot as of probably tomorrow, after I post the payroll. Today was the final paychecks for our teachers in Paris. So what that means is, a lot of their, their salary was withheld incrementally over the year, so that they could get their final paychecks to last them through. So their full salary will hit in full once I post the payroll, and that's gonna happen probably tomorrow. So you will see, especially that instruction function, jump from 80% expended up higher. So we'll see a lot, a big different picture at the end of, at the June's report. So I just wanted to say that. So basically, what we're doing is, we're just trying to adjust all of the salary lines. All of the expense lines have been adjusted, if there were in deficit throughout the year. But now we're seeing, as we come to the end, that a lot of these salary lines have been in deficit. And so, the budget transfers that you see, and yes, there are a lot of them. But what I tried to do with this transfer tonight is to try to anticipate what it's, what's going to happen once the payroll posts tomorrow for the five checks, and also as we go through the, I think there's three remaining payrolls. I understand we don't have a school committee meeting for stuff until the end of August. So I really wanted to take the opportunity to take, you know, a, a good look and try to predict, you know, with the help of our payroll bookkeeper, Erica. She's done a fantastic job keeping track of the payroll every week, and that's really helped, really helped me with this document here, is just looking forward and funding those accounts, so that, you know, maybe we'll have some deficits in, in individual lines at the end of June, but those can be adjusted as well. So this is going to, this is, these, these salaries, this is the brunt of our transfers that we'll be doing for the fiscal year. Typically, you know, in my experience, I've, I've waited till the year-end closes to catch up. But I understand, you know, in Wareham, we don't like to see deficits in any lines. So I'm sensitive to that, and so we've adjusted this way to, to make sure that, you know, we're, week to week, for anyone that looks at the budget, is going to see that we're, you know, don't have these big deficits. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about the monthly May report. Otherwise, we can move on to the, the transfers.
Sounds good.
Yep.
So you, you have the transfers, two pages long. So again, what I, what I tried to do is do these in anticipation of these, of the payroll that's gonna hit today's payroll, and also the following three Thursdays for the, to end the fiscal year. So there, there will likely be another transfers that we'll have to do. But I'm hopeful that this is going to, to be, as I said, a lot of it. You know, some of these, some of these, I'll point out, you know, and you can certainly ask questions if you have a specific question. Some things that stick out to me, you know, you see maybe the 10th line down system nursing assistant salary. This was a new account that we created. So it wasn't funded. These are the LPNs, the CNAs, not the registered nurses, not the school nurses, but the, those, those staff, the CNAs. We didn't have them in their own function, their own category. So this was just to put, to, you know, to allocate their salaries where they need to be. So next year, in next year's budget, there is a budget line for them, so you won't see a large transfer. So this year is just putting the money in to fund those accounts. And this is so that when we do the end of year report, coming up in a few months, that we can report them accurately in that, that four-digit code, so that it gets reported accurately out to the state. So that's one thing that I thought, you know, if, I didn't know, if I was seeing this for the first time, what I would look at. Some other things, you know, a lot of, we've had some resignations for positions that may or may not have been filled. That's impacting it. So that's where maybe we're drawing some money that we're, so, that we're putting into deficits. You know, again, that went into freezing the budget. You know, sacrifices have been made. And, you know, so in order to make sure that we don't end the year in a deficit. So we see some big transfers coming out. It could be a resignation mid-year for a position that we didn't fill. Some other things, one big thing is, at the, when the budget was set last year, and in this year too, there's a big amount that's brought in to balance the budget with ESAR. So last year, the budget was categorized in all of the, you know, in all of the lines. But then there was one big subtraction to balance it to what the town gave with ESAR. But there was, I, but what I did was, is I just continued paying people the way, I left things the way that I found them, in other words. So in actuality, when we had to balance the budget and put it in the system with, with the ESAR funds, so maybe there's some lines that were funded thinking they would be covered by ESAR, but in actuality, they weren't. So that's where you might see some of these big swings. And in order to, to do that, without having the luxury of, of having created it myself last year, or having, you know, to be able to look back to that big 1.8 million in ESAR that we used, I just took it as a percentage from our teaching salaries, just to try to make the math work. So that's why some of this, you might see, I think, in, in the elementary school, there's a transfer in of 800,000. But then you'll see in other lines, there's transfers out of some of the therapists. So it's just, it's just a result of, of how ESAR was used to, to balance the budget. So once we come out of that, and once in, in a year or two, I, I'm hopeful that we won't be having two pages of budget transfers in June. So those are some of the comments that, you know, that stick out to me. And of course, we do have a small transfer for Wareham Elementary Utilities. Actually, we, we got the final bills. This was in anticipation of what we thought the, the final bills might be. So even though this is the amount that we're transferring in, 12,000, we actually don't need, we won't need that much. So that was good. And the other, the other non-salary transfer is for transportation contract services for our regular ed transportation, and that's for the homeless and McInnes-vento students. So that, you know, as we know, that varies. We had an, we had an additional foster homeless student come in. So that can, that can skew things. And that's, that's a really, those are really hard to budget for, because they're just, you know, by nature, they're unknown. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about the budget transfer that I can, that I haven't hit on?
Anybody else with a transfer question? Chris?
I don't, it's not really a question. I guess I just want to point out that, for anyone who's listening, that the majority of your transfers, and maybe you just said it, is that it's between salary accounts. So it's not like we're adding to salaries, we're just transferring between those accounts.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which I think is important to me.
Right. So these here, I tried to fit them all within salary accounts. So as I said, there's some that have, that have, that hadn't been expended. And for those reasons, it might be because there was a resignation mid-year, or a position that wasn't filled. Or, you know, the effect of just applying, charging certain positions to ESAR that weren't necessarily planned that way when, when the budget line items were set.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. That, you've done that all along. And so, yeah, I appreciate that.
I have a motion to accept the two pages of budget transfers.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Abstain. 500. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Dr. DeAndrea, superintendent's report.
Can I?
Nope. Go ahead.
You expected to have X amount of ESAR funds for next year. Has X changed as a result of getting very close to the end of this fiscal year?
No, it has not. We had thought that we would need, we put in the budget to use, I believe, 1.8 million for ESAR for next year. And we have just over that. So I think right now, we, with, if we use that 1.8 million next year in the budget, we'll have about 20, a $20,000 cushion. So it's kind of right, right there. You know, and that, and that can vary. So, and we can use ESAR until September of 2024. So even if we don't use it all by the end, next June 30th, we have some, some flexibility with that, where we could use it in our FY '25 budget, if we are so fortunate.
That's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thanks.
That is good news. And, and, you know, I froze the budget back in, I think, October or early November, because I was very, very nervous that we weren't gonna have enough money. And Kristin has done a fantastic job of managing this budget to get us here. And I think we're potentially not gonna go into deficit at all. And so just thank you to her for, for all her work to make that happen. Okay, for my report, first is, I ask you approve the bill and payroll warrants.
I have a motion to do so?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. 500.
Thank you. Couple of gifts. $1,000 from Smithers Labs, that is going to the CARE program. That's gonna provide funding for some field trips to museums and to the Buttonwood Zoo. So thank you to Smithers.
Do we have a motion to accept a gift from Smithers?
Seconded.
Any questions?
No questions. I'll just point out that Smithers also gave us new scholarship this year on scholarship night. So very generous.
Thank you, Smithers. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose. 500.
Thank you. And back to the Parks Scholarship. If you remember last time, we, we were, we wanted to look in a little bit around who controls the money. And I did do some research, and I spoke with our attorney. And so, it is in an account. The account needs to be deposited with, held in a separate account by the treasurer, by law, but expended by the school committee. And I worked a little bit with Mr. Sweat, and he has been working with the town around how that money will be managed. I'll, I'll let him speak to it, cause he'd be able to speak to it better than I would. But I think we're all set for the school committee to accept the money. It's $689,692.06. And that money will be used for scholarships for our, our graduating seniors.
Mr. Sweat, do you want to address any of the details?
Yeah. So, I optimistically thought that we could have not only control of how it was spent, but we might also have the ability to control how it was invested. We don't have control over that by law, and this was, this was confirmed by the Department of Revenue and our town council, because they very nicely rejected my document that would have given us the ability to control how it was invested, including having the investment club or whatever they're, it's called at the high school get involved, because I thought that would be very educational. So, I went back to the drawing board and revised it considerably, showing appropriate deference to the fact that the law says they have to be in control of this account. But I got them to agree that we could make recommendations as to how it was invested, and they would ultimately have to approve it. Now, the key is that the document that allowed us to get this money says that this money is to endow, and that's a big, a big word, has to endow scholarships, which means that if we decided to just not invest it hypothetically and just keep spending it until it was gone, that would violate the, the terms of this bequest. So, it does have to be invested. Then the question is, does, is putting it in a savings account investing it? And I think the short answer is no, that would be irresponsible. Certainly, if, forget, forget the moment now, but for the last two decades, a savings account would have paid nothing. And so, we would have been forced to pay scholarships much smaller than if we had invested it. So, the position that I would like, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for the school committee's support on this, but basically, I'm looking to invest it the way, you know, a college endowment is invested, except in very simple terms. A college endowment might have all sorts of fancy alternative investments. I'm suggesting we simply have a diversified portfolio of stock, bonds, and cash, and perhaps even just index funds, and index funds for both bonds and, and stocks, and a certain amount of cash so that the cash to actually pay out the scholarships would be available every year, and we wouldn't have to automatically have to sell stocks and bonds in order to generate the cash. If we did that, then we should have over $30,000 a year comfortably. And that's assuming, and by, that's assuming approximately a 5% return on the money. Now, 5%, I, 5% is quite modest, because most pension funds do exactly the same thing. They invest it, but they sort of have to get 7% or 8%, sometimes even higher, just to pay their pension holders. And that puts a lot of pressure on them to, to invest it in a way that generates that kind of income. I'm suggesting the opposite. I'm suggesting that we say, all we want to earn is 5%, because that allows us to give 30, that's for round numbers, $32,000 a year in scholarships. Now, one of the questions I think it's appropriate for us to answer, and not the town, is, I think, given the cost of education, it would be great to take that $32,000 and divide it up into four, so that we give out four-year scholarships instead of one, instead of four times, instead, well, I'm, I had a very long day. And the 32, you could theoretically give eight. What do I want to divide 32?
Four scholarships at 8,000 a year.
Sorry, four, four scholarships for $8,000 a year, thank you, instead of, instead of one-year scholarships, that would be substantially less, okay? In terms of overall impact on the student. But I really think that's the decision the school committee should make, certainly not, you know, the superintendent or the budget committee or the investment committee that, that Matt May set up. You know, this should be a school committee decision as to whether we give four-year scholarships instead of one-year scholarships, and whether we invest it to earn 5% or we just tick, put it into a, a savings account or a mutual fund that will probably go down as interest rates go down, as compared to taking advantage of, of a prudent investment policy. I've said enough, I'm too tired.
And I recommend we do that, maybe at our August meeting, to take a look at that, all of that. So, do, so do I have a motion to accept?
Seconded.
All in favor?
This motion is just to accept the money, correct?
Accept the money, yes. Aye, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I have. I just want to, I just want to say thank you to the school committee for a great first year. Thank you to the staff and administration, students and families. As Joyce said, it's been a really fun end of the school year, lots of activities, graduations, celebrations. And it's been, it's been a good year, and I'm looking forward to many more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just quickly, very quickly, under school committee reports, the alumni subcommittee is looking to the public to nominate Wareham graduates that have gone on to have successful educational experiences or career of military experiences. They can do so by going to our website, which will tell you, go to alumni@wareham.k12.ma.us to nominate someone, give us their contact info, and then we will start highlighting those individuals. We've received about 20 names so far. We'd like to keep growing, growing that list. And also remind school committee members, MASC is offering a workshop on July 14th and 15th on a variety of topics. You can go to the MASC site for that. And finally, as one of our protocols that we created back in September, we said that we would review the protocols and do a yearly self-reflection and self-evaluation. That's also gonna be in August, but I would ask you to think about, what have we done well? What are things we could do better? How can we be more efficient going forward? And we'll talk about that in August. With that being said, any other business? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, 5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. DeAndrea, and a great first year. The meeting is adjourned.